Good evening and welcome to the October 7th City Council Meeting. If you'd join me for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the authority for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Rolofsky, roll call, please.
Michelle Volk.
Here.
Lou Kellier.
Here.
John Bermal.
Here.
Dan Walter.
Here.
Joshua Lee.
Here.
Okay. Well, now I'll move on to item number three, citizens' comments. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to address the council for? Okay. And moving on to item four, additional agenda information, Mr. Miller.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. And we will drive, dive right into our Public Works Quarterly Report, and I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Mr. Paul Ome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. This is a three-quarter report for Public Works. Like to start off with some improvement projects that are wrapping up this year on Dodd Boulevard Street Improvements. This is a joint project with our Dakota County on a turnback project on Dodd Boulevard. The segment one as shown here, that's been open since about end of July, and Sage Two is ready to be opened here in October 18th, we're projecting right now, weather permitting. They are finishing up the restoration of that section of roadway right now, and they'll be putting on the wear course here pretty quick. So it'd be nice to have that section of road opened up very shortly. The, we did hold a open house for the County Road 50 and I-35 interchange study. About 150 people attended that open house on September 9th. We did get some good feedback and get some good comments that we'll try to incorporate into the design. And we are gonna try to nail down a alignment here early next year, and then have another open house shortly thereafter to let the public know about some improvements that hopefully will be shortly coming. The street reconstruction project for this year is wrapping up as well. We're about 85% complete with that project. Only segments of the project that are left are 205th Street and Italy, 102nd and 101st Street. Those two sections of road are anticipated to be completed by the first week of November. The well 23 project off of 190th Street, the drilling work is now complete with that project. We are looking at completing the site work shortly. Hopefully, we'll start that up at the end of the month. And that project and the electrical building and pipe work and installing the pump will take place at that time. And then project will be substantially complete in the spring of 2025. For utilities, repainting a central maintenance water tower is now complete. That tower was down for about eight weeks for recoating interior and exterior. And glad to have that tower back operational. Water efficiency grant that we did receive this year has been underway since July. How about, we did receive a bunch of residents requesting rebates, and you can see the totals here. We are looking at maybe making modifications of the grant program next year, and include some other aspects of rebates for water efficiency, so stay tuned for that. Also utilities, water use for the year through September 30th is down compared to what it was in 2023. We're, I think we're down about 23% from 2023 numbers. It's gonna be attributed mainly to the wet summer that we had. Then utility locates is way up this year, about up 11% from 2023. This is contributed, this is due to the fact that we have two fiber optic companies in town now, installing fiber optic in residential and neighborhoods. So we're busy working on that project right now. For the streets division, just updates, we are in full swing with our fall activities. Tree removals, patching potholes, as need be for the snow flies, street sweeping as need be as well, getting our equipment ready for the snow and ice season. Moving on to environmental resources, just an update, quick update on East Lake. As you know, this has been a couple of year project they've been working on. This is to remove as much of the invasive fish from the lake as possible, and mainly carp and good goldfish that are in East Lake that are impacting the water quality of that lake. This is a joint power, a joint project between Vermillion Watershed in Dakota County and through a Bowser grant that we received. Just this year alone, we've removed almost 2,800 pounds of invasive species fish from the, from the lake. And we're gonna do another seining next year as well, too, to try to get more of the, of the fish out of the lake. Once the fish are all over, hopefully we'll see some good benefits, improve habitat for native species within the lake, less phosphorus loading in the lake quality, and enhancing the recreational value of the park and the lake as well. Imagine the Day Without Water again is scheduled for October 18th over MEA Week. This is open to all ages. We're gonna be talking about where Lakeville's water comes from and how it's, how it's treated, how much water a typical house would use in their landscaping, and then tips on how to conserve water as well. And then also take a tour of the water treatment plant. If anyone's interested in taking a, getting involved with Imagine the Day Without Water, I can go to the city's website and pre-register for that event. Just a quick update on the MS4 permit process. We did add a software package to our MS4 inspection for this year. It's been a great tool for us to, for inspection and working with a developer and contractor, and the ability to submit and correct site issues as they come up, and then also for reporting, and then also future inspections as well, a great tool to taking all that data and reports. This program just started up in July, and we've had over 100 inspections already on development sites and other projects. We have been working on a storm sewer maintenance joint project between Environmental Service Utilities to fill some unneeded manholes within our storm sewer system that are less than three feet in deep. I have little water quality benefits. So we've been removing the sediment from those basins and filling with concrete through the, through our different departments, and this will help streamline our MS4 permitting and, and, and basically help with less, less maintenance for our systems. We are, we did about 60 some manholes this year filling, and then next year we'll probably do, try to, try to do about the same amount as well. Our environmental, environmental educator for the summer did a great job with leading the Explorer at Ritter Farm Project. We did have a bunch of educational events scheduled on Friday through the parks and Recreation Department at, at Mako Environmental Learning Center, educating all ages on different aspects of environmental stewardship, providing. And then she did provide assistance with vegetation management inspections when she's not working on some of the outreach projects through development ponds and inspections and invasive species inspections as well, and then creating information brochures and graphics for, for the environmental resources area. Moving on to the forestry division, EAB and our shade tree ordinance. Through the fall inspection, we are anticipating to remove another 130 ash trees from the rightway over the winter month. And we are looking, where we did inject 841 trees that we would like to keep for EAB management within our rightways and its parks, and the breakdown between the parks and the rightways are shown there. And then for the private ash trees, we did work with 240 private property owners to remove trees that are infested with EAB under this year's ordinance work. We did finish up our 2024, 2025 private ash tree inspections, and we did find another 640 properties that have infested trees that were, so we're gonna be working with that. Those property owners are that outreach as well. So it's still a lot of, a lot of work to do there. And then we do still partner with Rainbow Tree Care if property owners wanted to save their ash trees, and you can work with Rainbow Tree Care for injection of their ash trees at a bulk rate through the city. For our EAB grant, as council knows, we did receive almost $340,000 for removal of ash tree, infested ash trees within our parks this year. We're just starting up this project, so this fall we're gonna remove 58 trees from our parks system and then replacing them with about 116 trees of various varieties throughout our parks as well. So it's about a two to one replacement ratio that we're working with. For the forestry division, we did add additional staff. Grace Benson started with us in September as our new forestry tech. She comes to us from the city of Amityaka. She has a great background in forestry management and public outreach. And Michelle Tyberg, she's our new climate impact coordinator member. This is a one-year term with her. This is through the Miracorp program, and she will be assisting forestry staff, environmental staff on a bunch of different projects. Additional outreach that we've completed, we had our first annual trade identification walk at Ritter Farm Park in September. This was the, a forestry department staff led to identify over 20 different species of trees within the park on a short walk in environmental, short walk from the Environmental Learning Center. So it was a great event, and we're gonna plan to have that again next year. And then real quickly, facilities, we did assist the liquor department with installing a sign, bidding out a sign for the Keokuk Liquor Store that faces I-35 for better exposure to, to the liquor store from, from that traffic. And then just highlighting some upcoming events that we have planned, paper shredding. Again, we're gonna have that on October 19th from 9:00, 9:00 AM to 12:00, 12:00 till noon at the central maintenance facility this year, pumpkin composting at Police Station on November 2nd and 3rd. You can drop off your pumpkins at any of those dates. Shoe recycling at Fire Station One on November 8th, 11th through the 18th. Holiday lighting recycling at City Hall and at all of our liquor stores from November to January. And then we do have ongoing recycling of, oh, actually furniture and mattresses. We do have a grant or rebate through Dakota County for mattresses and grant. Drop off at the Burnsville Site, that ends on December 20th. And then sports equipment drop off at Ames Arena all year long. And then pharmaceutical disposal at Police Station and food scrap drop off at the water treatment plant all year long as well. So with that, that's my update for Public Works, and I stand for any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Paul. Have a great evening, appreciate it. Moving on to item six, our consent agenda. Is there anything you'd like to highlight, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, a few items. Item six G is the appointments to the Youth Advisory Commission. You interviewed these candidates, I believe, last week or two weeks ago, and we appreciate the new applicants and those who are returning to, to serve on that. Item six H is a donation of just over 24,000, or a, a value of over $24,000 from the Lakeville Public Safety Foundation to the fire department. This is for a training mannequin, adult-sized mannequin that will be very helpful to the fire department for training purposes. Also with the fire department, item six R is a $5 million grant from the Department of Homeland Security for a safer grant. This is going to help pay for 15 new full-time firefighters in the city. And so we're very thankful that we're able to, to achieve that this year. And then lastly, item six T is a master agreement with the Lakeville Baseball Association for facility use and sponsorships, and this goes along with the sponsorship pledge that they have made and commitments that they have made for improvements along at our fields, most specifically Grand Prairie Park.
Okay, very good. Council, any items you want to discuss further? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion about the consent agenda? If seen, and all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have passed consent agenda. We'll now move on to item seven A, public hearing for the proposed 2025, 20 to 2029 capital improvement plan, street reconstruction plan, and the intent to issue GO, street reconstruction bonds and GO capital improvement bonds. And I don't know which one of you gets to go first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna start us off. We're gonna do a little tag team here with Zach and I. So this is part of our, the public hearing process for adopting our CIP, the street reconstruction plan, and then the official intent to reimburse when we do issue bonds. So, do that. Next slide, maybe? Thank you. All right. So first off, I want to thank city staff and the council that this is a very, it's a long process, very, a lot of work goes into it. So appreciating all the work that staff does, and then also council in your direction and your review of what staff has presented. We do start in May with this and goes all the way up through now, October, and even then, as we're working through details, as things continue to change and, and updating council with those changes that come along. Just a reminder, the CIP is a planning document, it's not our budget. We still bring things, projects and equipment requests to council, feasibility reports still have to go through council approval. Budgets are adopted, this is not the budget process. Also, the 2025 projects and the equipment replacements that are in the CIP document are pretty firm, but they still, like I said, still require that budget approval. And then our future years are just a good indicator of what's coming down, coming up. And, but those things can certainly change timelines, costs, but the, it's the best indicator that we have at this point in time. So as, when we start this process out, staff is going through and updating their equipment and facility changes and improvements, technology requests, and then our citywide projects. Throughout that time, it's a, it's a coalition of, of work between all these different departments and the finance staff and pulling all the numbers together. We brought the preliminary draft to the council at the August 26th work session, and then it went to the Planning Commission for their review and approval at their September 19th meeting. What we're showing here is, this is the complete project summary of the entire CIP for the five years, what's in the boxed portion. So it's, it's quite hefty lift, but $316 million. What we focus on right now is the 2025 projects at $66.8 million. And this is breaking down the street reconstruction or the street plan. We've got our regular street reconstructions each year for the next five years, and then also the street collector rehabilitations. So these pieces, this is part of what we're bonding for in 20, or plan to bond for in 2025. There are special assessments that also come into play with, with these projects. And with that, I'm gonna let Zach jump in here and do his part portion, and then I'll come back.
Very good, thank you.
Practice this this afternoon, so.
It did work.
It did. All right, my apologies, Mayor, council members. This is a story map that we created. It shares the story that Director Stahl shared here about the 2025 and 2029 City Lakeville CIP. It's got a lot of information. It's been shared with you at the work session. It's also been shared with the general public at the Planning Commission. So we will make this available on the city's website after this meeting, and then after we review it one more time. But I'll just highlight a few of the projects here. As Director Stahl said, this is very much a living document. Some things are actively changing. Some I was able to make changes in here today, but others we're still working through. So I'll just highlight a few things. We have our annual street reconstruction projects, as we talked about. It's scheduled for construction in 2025. We're making great progress. We're at about 90% plan level, but the expansion of 185th Street between Kenwood Trail and Apava Avenue is still on schedule for construction, starting next spring, and that'll go from its current two-lane configuration to four lanes. We did receive a Safe Routes to School grant to support this project, and this is a partnership with the county. This is one of the changes that I made. The county has programmed a roundabout at the intersection of Hamburg and County Road 50. We have it programmed for 2026. As in the last seven to 10 days, we're feeling a higher level of confidence that this will actually be constructed next year. So we still have a few outliers that we need to work through, but we've been working really hard to advance this project to next year. And as of tonight, we're pretty confident we can meet that goal. The freight rail car storage and transload facility is a carryover. We did push this project back. This is kind of a, a city-county partnership with adjacent development. This will be the extension of County Road 9179 Street from the Pheasant Run subdivision over to Brookshire. We did push that back to 2026 construction. That'll be future County Road with the bridge spanning North Creek. This is another project we pushed back one year. This is the Holy Oak Avenue modernization. This is from City Hall to just basically the water tower at 190th Street. This will be modernization to urbanize the roadway, to get rid of the roadway ditches, also to put trails on both sides, highlighted by a pedestrian underpass at this location as well, and turn lanes into all saints. Dodd Boulevard modernization is scheduled for 2027. That's the piece south of 50 and between 210th Street, where we just put the roundabout in a couple of years ago. It's two, and we, at this time, too, I want to just highlight that we'd also look at the intersection of County Road 50 and Dodd Boulevard as well. That would be part of the project. That traffic signal is aging, requires replacement, and that's a good chance for us to tie it into the project to see if any traffic control changes are required. And then finishing out Dodd Boulevard, we'll have the modernization south of 210th Street to County Road 70. And that's programmed for 2028. We'll see how things go, could be pushed to 2029. Another project that we're actively working on here and made some last-minute changes to this slide here is the County Road 50 Interstate 35 interchange. We have this, we're making good progress. Director Ome mentioned the open house we recently had, based upon our current engineering design. We're looking at a 2028, 2029 build. We're still trying to secure dollars for this, so there's a number of moving parts. But as we work through this, also trying to work through some details with MINDOT. This is what the city and county are moving forward with at this time. As, as Director Ome said, too, we should have, I'd say within the next four to six weeks, a pretty good idea on what the layout would look like, with the goal of submitting the preferred design to MINDOT by February 1st. So stay tuned, there'll be a lot of information coming up on this. Park and Recs, Park and Recreation will have completion of two collaborative greenways between the city and the county. This is the North Creek through Branch and Farm. This will complete a trail segment all the way up to County Road 46. It'll be done over two years, '25 and '26. One of the important things to note on this is this will complete the segment between the Minnesota Zoo and Farmington, and then this will piece will be owned and maintained in collaboration with Dakota County. Also scheduled for 2026 is extension of the Lake Marion Greenway. This will take us to Ritter Farm Park, going east, crossing Kendrick Avenue. And we have some segments we've completed along the south side of Lake Marion. This will bring us to Dodd Boulevard, and then we'll hop over, and then we'll go to downtown. We'll also improve that parking lot on 209th Street and create a connection to Holy Oak Avenue. And I'll show you that here, added this slide here. This used to be the Royal Milk Parcel, if you recall. So with that, that trail will now come down. We'll work on reconstructing this parking lot, but we'll create a greenway corridor so that folks can connect over to Holy Oak Avenue and reach our downtown businesses. We also have a number of neighborhood parks scheduled for construction over the next several years. Utilities, with our growth, we do have a few items to add. Lift Station 26 is actively kind of under design and construction, should be operable in 2025. This is located on the north side of town, north of 46, just east of Interstate 35. We have continued maintenance of our water supply, so we'll be scheduling the, mate the painting of Dakota Heights Water Tower in 2026. And again, this is kind of a placeholder. Director Ome talked about well 23 that's actively under construction, but based upon our anticipated growth rate, we'll expect to construct wells '24 and '25 and 2028. Again, that's subject to population. And then just wanted to highlight a couple of facilities. The First Center is actively in design as well, and that's programmed for '25 and '26 construction. We can continue to make good progress on that. That's at the old Public Works site up at 214th Street, just north of County Road 70 and east of Hamburg. We also have the central maintenance facility program for expansion 2027. And then we also have the water treatment facility expansion scheduled for 2027 as well. Environmental Resources. Lastly, we do take opportunities to partner with our watershed districts. We do have a partnership project scheduled for next year. It's the Green Ridge Stormwater Improvements on Flagstaff Avenue. In addition to our annual lake management and vegetation maintenance that we do throughout the city, our water conservation, and then also our forestry program, as Director Ome talked about with our third quarter here. And with that, there's a map here. We'll have that, as like I said, on the city website for folks, and if they have any questions, they can contact us. And I'll pass it back to Julie.
Thank you. Thank you. Multitasking. That's it. Yes, thank you so much. So just wanted to include in, in with the packet, explaining that there's also the pieces that are going to be levied in addition to the bonding that we'll be doing. And these are incorporated into the preliminary levy. We had some changes in, with council's direction to bring the levy down for the preliminary. So a couple of these pieces are in, in flux, I'll say. The 200,000 in equipment and the 100,000 in facilities, we did back those out of our preliminary levy in, in an effort to get the overall levy underneath 10% when we took out the park referendum. So those are taken out, but with the changes with the safer grant that we just received, there's still some things that we need to work through, and with council's direction, how we want to structure the final levy in December. So it kind of left these in as this is the planning tool. So just a heads up with that, but we did, we were able to, there's fund balance available in those funds right now that it, we're, we're covered with those projects that are scheduled for 2025 and 2026. So with the, the bonding that we would be looking at for 2025, the street reconstruction would be like 4.1 million, and then the street collector roadways would be 683,000.
be like 4.1 million, and then the street collector roadways would be 683,000. The First Center is the largest component, and that's at 17.8 million. So the total bonding that we're looking at for 2025 would be 22,620,000. And I just wanted to lay out because this is a wonderful, wonderful thing that we have achieved in getting the state of Minnesota money and the federal money. So the project, overall project for the First Training Facility is roughly 24.7 million. And taking out the state of Minnesota grant that we got, 7.2 million, the federal grant of 800,000, and then adding in the alternative cost functionalities that were added to the project, leaves that city contribution down to the 17.8 million. And then I just laid out here for the Training Facility, more detailed dates from what City Engineer Johnson shared with you, but looking at the bidding and negotiating to be coming up here shortly after the first of the year and starting construction in April. So. So I'll open up for a public comment and questions, and also from council they would like.
Okay. Counsel, any questions or comments before we move on to the public hearing? As you know, this is a lot of topic conversation we've had in work sessions. All right, this is a public hearing, so if anybody in the public has a comment about the capital improvement plan and others. Yeah? Yeah, if you want to offer your name and address?
Yep, my name's Troy Fortin, and what else?
Your address.
Address 20699 Hazelwood Trail. So I applaud your improvements, Hamburg, like move that to the top, that Hamburg intersection. And if you could allow like, I don't know, higher speeds on 205th Street while that's going on, that'd be perfect. Okay, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. No, I actually, this is my first time talking to the city council, so good to see you all, Mayor. Part of, part of what I wanted to comment on, other than your use of my money, great. Great use of federal money, also my money, great. Try to keep it down to minimum. I don't like my property taxes going up too high, my income taxes either, right? But one of the things I wanted to address, these, all of these expenditures are audited on like a super regular basis, right? You guys, I mean, like hardcore audits, you hire somebody outside to audit?
Exactly.
Do you know, is there any section or any area of the government that we don't audit?
I don't know, I'm looking, I don't.
Can you think of one?
I can't.
Okay. Do you know about the elections? So the elections are almost completely unaudited. So how much of your city budget do you audit? When you look at it?
So I'm happy to have the conversation, the public hearing specifically for the capital improvement stuff. Yeah. So we had our public comment at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, so I was misinformed. I thought it was at 6:30?
No, it was 6 o'clock. So I'm happy to talk to you about election stuff after the meeting.
Yeah, I'll talk to you after the meeting when it's over, but I would love to make a presentation to the full council about audit of the elections. Not because I think the elections are loose or whatever, but because I think it's important. It's how you guys got here.
Yeah. If you hang out to the end of the meeting, we'll connect.
Absolutely.
Okay.
But great on the, on the capital improvements.
Thank you.
Being my first meeting here, I'm stoked, especially about some of my heard.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other capital improvement, public hearing comments? Okay, seen none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the capital improvement program.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second? All is in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All is opposed? Okay. The public hearing is now closed. And with that, I believe, do we have to have three separate motions, or can we take it as one motion?
Three separate motions, if you would, please.
Okay. So I will entertain the three separate motions. John?
I'll make a motion here. I move, I motion, I move to approve the resolution adopting the five-year capital improvement plan, 2025 to 2029, and approving the issuance of general obligation capital improvement bonds.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion about the five-year capital improvement plan? Joshua?
Just a comment and an acknowledgement to our committees as well, who, even though this is not a budget, it did have an impact on the financial long-term planning that is also simultaneously happening. And so for residents who are following along to these processes as they're moving along, may want to also tune into a work session where we talked about that long-term financial plan. And I think many of us were pleased to see where we're headed long-term, even amidst many of these improvements that are substantial for the city. So thank you to, again, to the staff, but also to the committees that are working on these projects behind the scenes and the work that goes on months ahead of time before we see these in its final form. So just wanted to acknowledge that process that's also going on adjacent to this.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, seen none, roll call, please.
Michelle Volk.
Aye.
Aye.
Bermal.
Aye.
Walter.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Now I will take a motion on the five-year street recon plan.
I don't want to hog the motion, so.
I move to approve the resolution adopting the five-year street reconstruction plan, 2025 to 2029, and approving the issuance of general obligation street reconstruction bonds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion about five-year street recon plan? Okay, seen none, roll call, please.
Helier.
Aye.
Bermal.
Aye.
Walter.
Aye.
Lee. Volk.
Aye.
And finally, I'll entertain a motion on the resolution declaring the official intent of the city on certain expenditures. Joshua?
Move to approve the resolution declaring the official intent of the city of Lakeville to reimburse certain expenditures from the proceeds of bonds to be issued by the city.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion about the motion? Okay, seen none, roll call, please.
Bermal.
Aye.
Walter.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Helier.
Aye. Very good. Thank you both very much. Moving on to item B, the Cedar Hills North comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments. And I don't know, Mr. Truski, are you kind of, good evening, welcome? Good to see you.
Good evening. Steve Truski with Lennar Homes. Happy to be back in Lakeville. We've had great success here. We're excited for the opportunity to provide more housing options for families that can't wait to move into the community. You're probably going to see a lot of me in the coming months as this project progresses, so tonight I would just ask for your support for a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezoning. And after Ms. Goodroad gives you a few more details, I'm happy to come back up and answer any questions you may have.
Very good.
Thank you.
Ms. Goodroad? Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, as Mr. Truski stated, U.S. Homes Lennar has applied for comprehensive plan and some zoning text amendments. So we've been working with Lennar on a preliminary plat. Right now, it's named Cedar Hills North. That name might change, but for now, we're working with that name. But this is the layout that we've been working through, and we're anticipating this being in front of our Planning Commission in November, and then in front of you as well as in November. And so part of this application has been working through some, what we really consider very minor, changes to the land use and underlying zoning. So on the slide in front of you is the existing conditions. The west side of the site is medium-high-density residential, and then zone RM3. And the east side of the map is low-medium-density residential, and then zoned RST2. And so we have a couple minor modifications, and a lot of this was driven by the pipeline that exists. That is, I can get the mouse to show up, on this line as well as the channel realignment. We wanted to minimize the crossings of this channel, and Lennar has been working closely with us. And so this area here is being changed from medium-high-density residential to low-density residential. And then this portion of the site is going from that low-medium to the medium-high-density, where the townhomes are located. And then this area is going from low-medium to low-density residential. And so it's really, the Met Council gets very precise in its land use and also its density calculations. And because of these modifications that we asked the applicant to make regarding the overall layout, it really shifted the density on this portion of the site, driving the need to go to that low-density classification. From a zoning standpoint, we are at RM3 in this portion of the site and RST2 on the majority of the single-family site. So again, a very small modification made in this area to go from the RM3 to the RST2. And then the remaining, this little corner again, I'm going from the RST2 to the RM3. And then the remaining of the site will be the RST2. That does not need to change because that falls, that zoning district falls within the low-density residential land use category. So hopefully that makes sense. Again, a lot of it was driven through working with the applicant on the needs that they had from the type of development that they wanted to bring, which will include 89 single-family lots and 144 townhome lots. Again, this will be coming to you in November. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on the land use amendment and the zoning amendment on September 5th. There was no public comment during the public hearing, and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval. And I would stand for any questions.
Okay. Counsel, any questions or comments? Okay. I would just say, I mean, it seems like a pretty reasonable request that we're just doing a little swap, so with that, I will take a motion. Do we need to have four fifths on this?
Yes.
Okay. It looks like there's, yeah, John?
I move to approve, number one, a resolution amending the 2040 comprehensive land use map, and number two, an ordinance amending the zoning map and adoption of findings of fact for Cedar Hills North.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion about the motion? Okay. With that, roll call, please.
Walter.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Helier.
Aye.
Bermal.
Aye.
Very good. We look forward to seeing more about the project in the coming weeks. Thank you very much. With that, unfinished and new business. Seen none, just quick announcements. Our next city council meeting is here in the city council chambers on October 21st, and the next work session is Monday, October 28th, here at City Hall in the Marion Conference Room, the new Marion Conference Room. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.